Can you apologize now that you're recording? All right, I'm gonna call the meeting to order Monday, September 11th, 2023. We're gonna start with a pledge. All right, it looks like to start, we have a public hearing for a new food truck, Gemini Cakes. Uh, looking for October 8th, 2023 at Vinegar Hill. Anybody here representing Gemini Cakes? Anybody from the public need to comment on this? All right, I'll close the public hearing, seeing none. And the agenda. Any additions, subtractions? Committee board reports, nothing?
No.
Make a motion, approve as submitted. Motion by Dan, seconded by Phil, all those in favor? Public forum, anybody from the public? On a non-agenda item, something that's not slated? Could you come up to the table and just turn the microphone on and state your name, please?
My name is Priscilla Coffin and I live at 120 Senate Road. And I am here to express my concerns with how the traffic changes in the summertime with, folks that are coming in to stay at the Red Apple. There, our neighborhood increases by 100, there are 140 sites there. So that could be 140 additional trips a day or 280 trips in and out. But my bigger concern is the rate of speed that people are traveling on Senate Road. It's posted at 35. I've had many conversations with Deputy Harmon and I've also spoken to dispatch, but my bigger, the other concern in relationship to all of that is, one is, not only are they speeding, people speeding, but at least once a week, somebody passes another car in front of my house at 120 and also it happens at 170. And most of the passing occurs from the direction of the Red Apple. And I, I've witnessed at least 10 episodes of that this summer, but I experienced it myself the other day. I was returning early in the morning from a walk at the beach. I crested the hill by the Red Apple and there was a car following very close behind me. I put my left turn signal on to go into my driveway and the car passed me that was behind me with my left turn signal on. That was early in the week and then on Saturday, a guest was coming to visit me. She was coming from the opposite direction. And around McChip K, she had, there were two cars ahead of her and a vehicle near McChip K pulled out around her plus two other vehicles and had barely pulled back into the lane by the Red Apple. So it's pretty dicey. Um, and Deputy Harmon's aware of that and I called dispatch about both of those incidents. I will say I was not a proper older woman and I used an obscene gesture and shouted out the window. Some words that I will not repeat here, but it really is concerning. I'm, and now with the Log Cabin Road closed, we're getting an increase in traffic and you know, there's not much that can be done about that. Most people are ignoring the detour sign onto Lombard and they're using Senate Road as the way to get from Old Post down to North Street. But I wanted you folks to be aware of it and um, I'm not sure what can be done. I know that the Sheriff's Department has been very kind about putting up a sign, but basically it says, drive slowly, be polite, um, but there's nothing there really tracking what speed limit or people are passing, um, that are, that people are driving on that road. And I've appreciated what's been happening in Kennybunk and Kennybunkport where they've dropped the speed limits on both Summer Street and um, North Street down to 30 miles an hour and both of those communities are patrolling pretty carefully and then they have the flashing speed limit signs and I'm noticing that people are paying close attention to those and I was just, was hoping that something like that might be able to happen for the Senate Road. And I know it's not the only street in town that's having difficulties with traffic, but passing, it's pretty scary. And three cars. I did call Red Apple and I said, I just saw one of your campers leaving and um, had they been pulling out of that campground, there would have been a horrendous accident at that time when that car was passing because that, that driveway from the Red Apple is blind. So somebody coming from the west direction and heading east, they would not have seen somebody hauling a trailer trying to get out of that campground.
Have you noticed, now you mentioned it, you had talked to the sheriff, have you seen additional patrols out there, anybody running radar or?
Yes, they've been, they've been very present. Um, I've, what I've noticed this year is that the increased traffic is between six and nine o'clock in the morning and three and five in the afternoon. I'm not sure that I've really ever seen anybody in my section. Um, I know that a couple of times they've parked in my driveway, which is, you really can't see it from either direction because of um, green growth. Um, so it's a good place for them to, to be parked, but I have seen them stop people. Um, but I haven't seen them delay anybody long enough to give them a ticket.
Keith, I brought this up before about looking into more of those uh, and I think they're solar, I don't even think they're hardwired, but the signs that the, the area towns are using. I travel through Kennybunk quite a bit and it does seem that people hit the brakes when the sign says, you know, too fast or Kennybunk actually has some pretty creative
Yeah.
Uh, you know, slogans or whatever that, you know, like bingo it says and but I do notice brake lights come on when the sign flashes too fast or I think, I think if we need some of those in town, we really do.
I think they're solar powered.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I, I've noticed that people do that too. And if Summer Street and North Street can go drop down to 30 miles an hour and it can be enforced, I don't see why something like that couldn't happen on Senate Road. I mean, I understand Log Cabin is at 45, that makes sense. But Senate Road, I think with that campground in the summertime, it can be really dangerous with the vehicles that are coming in and out of there.
Yeah, the disadvantage of Rundle has is we only have
I know.
A police officer here 80 hours a week.
I, I'm very aware of that and he's been very kind and we've checked in with each other a number of times and I appreciate that. Thanks for listening.
Yeah. Anything else from the public?
I have something. I'm wondering with this pine tree power coming up on the ballot, if, how it will affect our taxes from CMP and how it will affect our TIF.
If it passes, you're talking about the um, the um, power companies going to a public entity controlled by the legislature?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I have, I haven't seen any other further details on that in terms of what actually the bill will be or what, um, what effect it may have on, on anything. The only thing I've seen is how much the opponents are saying that it would cost if it goes to a uh, public controlled, a private, a public controlled uh, and, and utility, so.
The things that I've read about it is any acquisitions that be included in whatever the, whatever the cost, whatever is taxed at today. So that, none of that should change. It was an article and it was a, it was an FAQ somewhere that I read and there was a question about TIFs and um, it stated that it, that shouldn't affect anything. So that's part of when they say it's gonna be 13 billion or whatever it is, that's part of the dollar figures that are in there.
Yeah, I, you know, as more flushes out, uh, Velma, I'm sure that we'll have some more information that we can share, but I haven't seen anything yet and there hasn't been a lot of discussion on it uh, other than what I've seen in the paper and on the news.
All right, anything else? Seeing none, we need an approval for two minutes. Monday, the 14th and the 28th.
Make a motion, we approve the August 14th and August 28th minutes as submitted.
Motion, motion by Dan, seconded by Tom, all those in favor? We have no committee and board reports, Mr. Manager.
Yeah, it's just a couple of things that um, I had put in your, your packet and your agenda for, for some quick discussion. Um, they're really more related to um, future budget items that we may have to discuss. Particularly, uh, the, the first thing that I put on there was the possible consideration of reevaluation of real estate within the town of Arundel. Uh, the last time a revale was done in the town was 2004. So it's, we're pushing up onto 20 years with a, the standard from uh, the main revenue service is around a 10-year period. I think that we've done a good job of trying to keep the, the ratio um, pretty consistent. Um, speaking with Beth this past week, right now we have a certified ratio of 77% which um, when she said that they did the analysis, what they do is that the state revenue, the revenue service will come in and do a analysis of sales that occurred uh, in the case when they set the 77 or the 70% was back two years ago. So they got data from two years ago to set that certified ratio. She has the ability at that point to raise it 10% or 10 points either way. In, in this case, it came in around 70, she went to 77 for this upcoming tax year where it was 81 the year before. So we're seeing steady decline um, relative to that. The, the other issue we're now facing, I think, is that we're finding exorbitant amount of um, market sales for uh, properties within Arundel. Case in point, uh, one that I can, you know, uh, briefly say about, we have a, a property that sold on Fairway Drive recently. We had it assessed at 317 and it just sold for 675. So um, and we're finding that regional, that regular sales of properties are somewhere within the three to $400,000 market. And it doesn't really matter where you're going, you're finding those sales um, pretty much anywhere within our, in our area. From south of us all the way to, I'd say, north and west of us uh, as well. So and I'm experiencing on a personal level right now as my, my oldest daughter is now moving back into the area from South Carolina, will be here in October. And we're earnestly trying to find some housing. And it's, we're finding housing for two bedrooms, two baths, anywhere between the uh, 380 to 450 mark. So uh, it's pretty significant. So the reason I bring it up is I think that we're going to find that we're now in that, in that part where we, part that we need to start discussing that particularly at the, at the selectman, select board level as well as the budget board level. What I'm going to do unless I hear strong objections from the board will be to begin developing an RFP to prepare it to go out to various vendors. And I provided you tonight the, the list from the main revenue service of, of certified uh, vendors within um, Maine that will provide uh, those services for us. So and that will give us an idea of um, uh, cost associated um, um, with that, with that venture. Again, I, you know, if you haven't been around a revale, um, basically what happens is that once the RFPs go out and we end up soliciting a vendor and we have approvals from the, the so, the annual town meeting to expend that money that will, they'll come in with a, uh, the company will come in and set up shop, begin to look at our um, our property record cards and go out and do site visits, hopefully to every piece of property that we own with those cards, update those cards accordingly if they're not presently updated and then um, redo our tables, our value tables to determine where the values will be um, uh, moving forward. So pretty extensive process, but I, I think something that we need to really seriously begin to, to think about.
Keith, is this something that you're looking to put to the voters for our June 2024 meeting?
That would be my goal, yes. Try to hit there and um, I think I've, I think I spoke to you all that we were very fortunate this year with the increase in value that we saw within the community, which was a little bit of surprise to us, um, that we weren't able to use, that we didn't have to use any of our uh, fund balance to set the tax rate this year. So I'm hoping that these values that come in or these costs for um, for this revale will be something that we may be able to utilize additional funding that we've always set aside for another purpose and change it to a purpose to do the revale. So that's what I'm hoping that we can end up doing.
And any idea on what the cost would be for?
I'd only be guessing, be speculating. 250? Or more, I would say, somewhere in that neighborhood.
It's that much?
I think so. I think that's where you're going. Uh, Tom, I don't know if you've been associated with your, your practice with any of the values in terms of revales going on. Yeah, I, I, I'm not sure. I'm sure our, our inventory has gone up significantly from that, from 20 years ago. So all that will play a part in what, what they come up with. The, the other thing that I wanted to have a discussion on was um, if you recall, uh, this past budget process, we um, we began to dance around the um, process of perhaps providing a public uh, retirement, main PERS or retirement service through uh, main um, uh, public retirement service. We um, have now discovering um, that uh, we've lost two of our uh, fire personnel employees that recently were hired to other municipalities that offer main PERS. Um, and we've had two candidates that we tried to fill those positions once they left that took other positions that um, that those municipalities offered main, main PERS to them, to their fire uh, personnel. Essentially, uh, what we're discovering is that most of the municipalities that have main PERS are going to this special plan 3C. And essentially what it is, is um, the ability of a firefighter to retire after 25 years of service at two-thirds of their pay, which is average, what they do is they take the three highest averaged salaries that you had. And there's a, there's a formula there and essentially divided by three and that's basically what they come up with in terms of retirement. That's very um, very enticement for um, some of these professionals uh, in the, in firefighter and public safety to get involved in simply because of, of, of that. What, what we're doing here is that obviously we have a um, 457 or 401 plan for our employees where we contribute 6% of their annual income. And the um, employee has the ability to uh, contribute 6% as well. So essentially they can get 12% under main PERS. I think right now it's, um, it was 13.4%, but it's going down to 12.8 uh, in this next budget um, fiscal go around for, for folks under main PERS. So um, Andy did a little bit of analysis for us, um, just to, based on some basic firefighters, either basics or advances or paramedics and, and with a bump in, in pay in terms of overtime compensation. We're probably looking somewhere around um, 12 to $13,000 of additional expenses to offer that program to uh, those, those folks. And the reason I bring it up now is that it's, it's something that I think we seriously need to look at and consider. I'll continue to gather more data uh, related to it as, as well as hopefully answer all your questions when the time comes, but I think it's something that we as a municipality, if we want to be competitive in the employment of these uh, folks that are out there, that we're gonna have to think very seriously about maybe having that as a, as an offering for our folks. So uh, just something to think about. Um, I think we're working very well at providing hourly rates that are, that are far more competitive than they were in the past. I, um, you guys made a great bump with some of our employees this past year. And you've been very um, I, I think um, very nice to our employees in terms of uh, some of the considerations we've had uh, for additional compensation for some of our other employees. So I don't think it's about the hourly rates as much as I think it's about the benefit packages that we may be able to offer. So.
We discussed this at budget. There was a, a question, we didn't do this because we still have to pay social security, right, for the employees?
That is correct.
So why is that different than teachers? Why? Because the schools don't pay social security for teachers.
Again, I'd have to look into that a little bit more and I, I knew that question was coming up and I wish I had any answer for it tonight and I don't.
Because that's why we decided not to go down that road.
Andy may have an answer for it.
Uh, based on some research, we, we signed a uh, a um, infinity clause with social security that the town did. Uh, and I don't know when the date that was. But we have to continue to pay social security forever in this town.
That, that is correct. I remember that now. We did look into that. There was a right, there was an infinity clause that was, that was uh, signed by the town years ago. Don't know why, maybe. We'll have to look at it a little bit further, I guess. I, I have question marks on people's faces who have been here a lot longer than I have, so I'm not quite sure.
Lawyer to figure that one out.
Yeah.
Exactly.
That, that essentially is all I have on that.
I have something to say about main PERS. I'm a retired state employee and I started working for the state when I was 58 years old. And at the time of my hiring, it was, I was not informed that I would lose two-thirds of my social security benefit with the state, uh, with the main PERS. And I don't know whether you're aware of that. So I retired from the state of Maine after working there for 10 years. There's something called the windfall elimination provision. And that's in at least 15 states, Maine is one of them. And I was, I, I was still working for the state when I turned the age that I could to collect social security, but I didn't have 30 years under social security. But when I started getting my social security while I was still working, I was getting $1,129 a month. Upon retirement, my, my benefit dropped to $468 a month. And it stayed there until this past year when social security did a cost of living and I'm now getting $549 a month from social security. And it's because I was under main PERS, not paying into social security. I'm not sure that I would have taken that state job at the time, had I known that I was going to lose so much of that benefit. And I was fortunate, I was able, I retired, not able, I retired um, on disability, so I'm getting a decent sized pension, but had I not been able to retire on disability, my amount from the state would have been $740 a month. And then with social security, I would have been getting $468 a month, which was a huge change. So I, I very much suggest that you look into the windfall elimination provision and see how that might impact people as, as you're thinking about doing the main PERS.
Anybody else have anything on this matter? Uh, moving on.
The stated reason or the ex-employees and others, the stated reason they didn't take the job or left was because of?
Uh, one of them was an internal candidate. He took a job over an actant uh, because they offer main PERS. I, I don't know what their salary is over there, um, but he legitimately said he had to look out for his family and accepted main PERS. We had another candidate um, that we were upfront during the interview process saying we were trying to work through this and uh, he said, nope, I'm not taking it because you don't have main PERS. Now, I, I actually, I mean, I agree, everybody's situation is a little bit different and some, I mean, talking to some people, there are some municipalities that don't pay for social security. And that hasn't sent them, because it went all that, totally agree with them.
I will, I will share with you that our Senator from this district also was impacted by the windfall elimination.
So those individuals that took, didn't take the job, were they part of main PERS before?
Uh, one was not, he, he's a he just moved up from Massachusetts. The other one is, I, I believe he was under the teachers. He was a former teacher, side of swap occupations.
Yeah, so he, so he had something built up in main PERS.
Not much, he was only a teacher, I think up to 18 months. I don't have the resume in front of me to verify that. So.
All right, moving on to business. We've got some uh, HOA members of the Rundle seasonal cottages, that's this group.
Hi, good evening. My name is George Justalaris and I'm on the finance committee for the Rundle cottages and we, we just formed our, our new um, our new association with a new board of directors and, and, and new committees because after seven years, the developer has to give that up to the homeowner. So we have a new board. We have, we have new finance members and um, we thought it'd be a good idea to come and introduce ourselves since we are members of the community. And I know I'm, I'm here eight months now of the year for most of the year. And um, sitting next to me is my colleague.
Jim O'Donnell, yeah, I've, I've been a homeowner at Cape Rundle for six seasons. And uh, we, we feel part of the community. We, we contribute with fundraising. We just recently had a back-to-school fundraiser for the Arundel schoolchildren. Uh, we donated about $2,200 for Wendy to distribute to families in need. We also have a fundraiser um, for the COS, Community Outreach Service, which is the food bank in Kennybunk. We feel very fortunate to be part of this community and we felt that we wanted to contribute and give back to the community. We're kind of like a little town within Arundel. Rundle's not a big town, but we're, we're even a smaller town and we, we have a finance committee which George and I are on. We're looking at our budget just like y'all looking at your budget. We're looking at snow removal, we're looking at landscaping and uh, you know, trying to formulate what our costs are gonna be going forward. And we're here really basically to uh, introduce ourselves and say that, you know, we, we are part of this, this community, just like, we're not here year-round, we can't be. We don't have a, you know, we're here eight months out of the year, uh, as you know. So we, we uh, we have a couple of concerns, one of which is taxes and. We uh we have a couple of concerns, one of which is taxes. And our taxes went up seven. Over, you know, close to eight hundred dollars just on the land. And uh there there's a lot of concern about that. Um and and also, uh you know, we we would like to be able to open a little bit earlier too. You know, we we don't open until May first, maybe an opening on April first might be something that the the board might consider. So. I I know this isn't the the time to discuss that in detail, but that's something that uh we would like to bring up.
But but just just remember, we contribute uh to the local economy. We also. We're really, I don't think we tax, we would tax your schools at all. Because we don't have any children coming from uh uh come from the cottages that would actually impact the school system. And we also, you know, I I we we pay HOA and taxes year round. So. An extra month, the the our 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 owners would like that. Well, I don't even know what the process would that would be. But we get together with town council and look at the uh and look at the agreement we have with the Rundle and maybe amend it if if. If this board was so agreeable to to that. And I know and uh.
Yeah, that that the uh the dates that are established for. For the uh cottages to be open are in our ordinance. So it would make an ordinance change. That would have to be voted by the people of the community in order to make that happen.
So would it be a town meeting or be a referendum?
Yes, it would have to be a town town meeting and it'd have to be a proposal uh before. Uh this board as well as the annual town meeting board.
Would that affect the TIF also?
Not sure it affects the TIF. I don't believe it does. Um it shouldn't have any effect on the TIF. I think the purpose of of the limitations, uh you know, in history is. You know, you guys have more history on the cottages than I do, but I think that the limitation of the times that. Uh that that was open was specifically to try to curb any um. Uh education or school opportunities for people to live there. But yeah, if you want to talk about it more, just uh you know.
And we also would uh would not prepare really to talk about it tonight, but the tax issue, we'd like to get together with the assessor. And go over the tax maps and kind of understand what what everybody's paying for. Because we're in the middle of uh, you know, one section is being done and I think the developer still has that. Part of those sections that are done kind of, but some haven't been turned over and it's a it's confusing to everybody and. Everybody had sticker shock, you know, it's like you go in there looking for a cheap car and then you they're showing you a forty thousand dollar tag. So it's just that's what kind of happened to our to our group. Um.
And if any questions for us. So so how did the taxes go up? I mean, our tax rate has been pretty flat.
Well, it is what it what occurred is uh there was land adjustments that were made based on um. Based on sales that are there, which is perfectly within, you'll have to talk to the assessor about it a little bit more, but perfectly within her realm to. To adjust those on in a certain criteria in a certain neighborhood, which she exercised there because uh. We found that the the sa- the the values that we have on the properties are significantly less than what the properties are now presently selling for.
No, no, I was reading the uh the TIF documents. It doesn't give a an end date. I couldn't find it. Is there an end date uh that people can expect when it's coming to?
Yeah, twenty thirty five, twenty thirty six.
So that was a thirty year TIF?
Um yeah, I think it was, it started in twenty fifteen. So so twenty.
So a twenty year TIF?
Yeah.
So when the developer, a question for you on that. So when the developer has done, which he should be next year or early in two thousand twenty five. And we're still paying that TIF for till two thousand uh thirty five, does he still get part of that TIF money?
That money still goes to the developer for all the infrastructure that they've caught, they've put in the ground, yes. For that extended period of time, as long as the as long as the TIF stays within the. The confines of the purpose of what the TIF was given for, which would be for. The commercial enterprise or the seasonal resort, excuse me?
Does that get audited?
It gets audited by audit auditors. I'm not quite sure what they what they do uh in terms of it. But we should have all those documents as to what we've provided to him in dollar wise, as well as what we've collected as well. Uh I think ours is um about five hundred and fifteen thousand cents. Uh to this day, somewhere in that neighborhood.
But you know, ge- getting back to the, just to get to getting back to next in the month, we won't usually, we won't be sending children unless. People live in a Rundle and then we'll go there for the summer and go back to their homes in a Rundle. And that's maybe one or two people without children that that live in a rental during the year.
Really?
Yeah, and then they go to the villages, not villages, excuse me, cottages in the uh in the. I mean, where my mind is. So, do you have any questions for us or?
I'd yeah, I I would ask a question. Um is every single one of those residents shut down and winterized in the winter months?
Yes.
There every, the water's drained out of them, the heat's.
Water is drained out, isn't it?
No, not, no, it's at the discretion of the homeowner.
Right.
So the homeowner can get a plumber.
Right.
He comes in and blows the lines out, puts antifreeze in the traps.
Yep.
In my case, I'm in Massachusetts. I turn the temperature down, I shut the water off. I I open up the valves.
Yep.
There's, it's not completely shut down with the.
Well, we leave a heat on to a.
So there are residents to leave the heat on.
Sixty degrees.
Yeah, we leave it, you really have to because of expansion.
Sure.
Don't want cracks in the walls.
And that's plowed throughout the entire winter.
It has to.
Every road in there, yeah.
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, so you could have access in case of an emergency. We also get deliveries from. The propane company. They have to shovel to the tanks in order for them to access the uh the topping off of the propane. All of the cottages have pro- well, not all of them.
Yep.
Majority have propane, some have electric.
Anything else from the board? Yeah, appreciate you guys coming in.
Oh, thanks. Uh you you'll be seeing us at uh.
Yeah.
It just, if anything comes up, we'll be happy to call. Thank you uh.
Shut this off.
Um M D O T, plans highway improvement.
Yeah, I just, I I guess I provided it more for you for you folks as information. I provided, I didn't give you the schematics of the road. But essentially, this is, this affects the cottages once again. Uh part of the part of the program was to put a turn lane on Route One. To access the cottages and it's part of the agreement that the developer made with the town and essentially. Have to work through Maine Department of Transportation to make it happen. So. All the the preliminary engineering design and work has been completed. Uh we're now into um, I I think they're into the phase of. Of putting it out to bid and hopefully getting a bid and they're looking at the next su- spring to start that project. So. When you return uh in May, you'll probably have a little bit of construction going on out in front uh. As part of the requirement that they got to finish up. I don't know if you folks knew, but um. I believe section or phase six of the project was not going to be completed. Um and as I understand, the developer um has made an agreement with the Rundle Conservation Trust and turned that. Land over to the trust uh for future trails perhaps, or some other. Uh other opportunities out there. So there won't be any more uh development after phase five is completed.
All right, moving on. Uh everybody but Tom needs to discuss the food truck application.
Yeah, I provided you the complete package. Um as as we um uh discussed in several. Uh meetings before, the um Rundle Planning Board has provided approval for for food truck locations. As well as food truck approval at Vinegar Hill for certain functions. Now, they, I guess they've uh reached out to. Uh Sue uh Seal here who runs Gemini Cakes and she lives here on Downing Road and. In a Rundle. So she'll be uh providing that service, I think, on the eighth of October. All all fees have been paid. Um and all paperwork has been uh received.
Keith, before we vote, uh one thing I noticed, I think it was last meeting, part of the ordinance was no more than three food trucks. Is that at a location or? I remember reading something about no more than three.
In one location.
In one location. Does someone pay attention to this?
Correct. When the approvals were given, there were only three locations that were approved. So on the on the lot.
Right.
So they could have up to three for any different, any function. They couldn't have any more than three. So, but I don't know how that relates to the original. Um ordinance that was approved. I'd have to look at that again um to determine that.
I didn't know if someone would be was paying attention all the day. It seems like there's a lot more of these food trucks coming across the.
Well, particularly at Vinegar Hill.
Yeah.
Yeah, usually the ones, I mean, we had the ones on Route One and there are three there, uh three locations and they were. Given seasonal passes and I don't think we've had any for special, well, we've had a couple of special functions, I think, but. Everything else has been, I think, at Vinegar Hill.
We we haven't had an instance where there's three there. Have we, that you know of?
At Vinegar Hill, in any one time? No, I don't think so. I think we've seen two, up to two.
Yeah.
Uh I'd have to look back at the records if there's been more than two. And Jason's got all his notes.
Yeah. So we can vote on it. I just uh I just remember reading something about it. I didn't know if somebody was paying attention to the dates and the amount of trucks that were there. You got a motion for this?
While you're reading, I'll make a motion that we approve uh Gemini cakes for October eighth. From eleven to five P M at Vinegar Hill.
I'll second that.
A motion by Dan, seconded by Velma. Any more discussion on this? All uh all those in favor? We have one abstention. And we have uh just payable tonight. Motion by Velma. Second by Phil. All those in favor?
Sign away.
Um yeah, before you uh that one's over a million dollars, by the way, which uh doesn't happen very often for us, but. Um it it's got the school in there as well as the um county tax, which. You know, between five hundred and almost three hundred for the county. Uh pretty much makes up those on those two bills. But one of the things I did mention to Velma and Dan before you all got here was that. Um the the solar trackers that we have here on site. Uh are really uh significantly impacting our electric bills now. Uh after we. Um s- distributed um the power that's generated from these trackers to our other locations. We allocated forty two percent here at the uh town office, the municipal building of the money of the power generated. Thirty one percent to um to the fire service, twenty percent to um the public works. And I think we got one percent to um. Uh some couple of the the street um. Traffic lights that we own. Um and we're getting absolutely, as matter of fact, we're. We're creating so much electricity that we're not paying anything but the minimum to CMP for. And it's about thirty one dollars a month for all those locations, because we're creating so much electricity, we're. We're taking care of our own electrical needs, um which is pretty, pretty neat. It's nice to know and it. Um I think uh the next time I get an opportunity, I I I need to analyze that a little bit more because. Now we're getting, we're banking. Uh kilowatt hours for the fire service and we're banking kilowatt hours to the um public service. So. Uh public work. So e- essentially, um we're giving them more than they actually need at this point. So. Uh we may be able to distribute it to maybe our streetlights. We we noticed that our streetlights are about almost five hundred bucks a month. So. Uh that may be a good contribution that we can make there as well. So I'll have to look at that a little bit harder.
Can you imagine if we had a summer with sun?
All right, anything else this evening?
Uh yeah, just real quick, have you heard anything more yet for the uh documents that were sent out for the TIF?
The all the documents have been signed, they've been sent to attorney uh Sosier and he indicated to me that. Uh he'll be putting them in a packet, send them along to D E C D. He'll provide me a um email copy of what's being sent. Um as soon as he sends it. So we're we're there.
Get it going.
I have a question. The cottages asked if they perhaps could open April first. Do we need a petition from them? A formal request from them to to go to April first?
Um I'm not sure if the we need it and. If the planning board appu- puts it into a package that they accept. So um I'd have to do a little more research on that.
Yeah, they'd have to go to the planning board first and request it from the planning board for an ordinance change.
All right, seeing nothing else, looking for a motion to adjourn. Motion by Dan. And your second. Second by Phil. All those in favor?